Okay.
Okay.
I hate to cut all the fun here, but it is 5:00 P.M. I'm going to call to order the Policy Resolution Legislation Committee of the Board of Education of the WASPA School District. The first thing that we need to do is approve the minutes from the July 8th, 2019 PRL meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, those minutes are approved. Okay, the next item is the Legislative Update. Now, as you can see, Vice President McKee is not here this evening, and he is technically the Legislative Liaison, so I'm taking a little bit of liberty with the Legislative Update. I had noticed that in one of the WASPA emails from yesterday, or was it today, WASPA was referenced. You know, they pull different articles, so they had actually included an article from WAOW, and it was because they were just getting local reaction. I don't know if anybody had noticed the Pawnee School District and how they're approaching students that are caught sexting. And because that is, you know, sending those types of pictures are considered child pornography in the state of Wisconsin, but what can happen, of course, is children can end up on the sex offender registry. So what Pawnee is doing is fining their students. $439 for the first offense, $628 for the second offense. I don't know what it is going on from there. Well, the reason that local media reached or reported on it is just because it is kind of a new or different approach. That's a big fine for somebody that age, or any age, really. So I don't know if you have any comments on WASPA's School District. There wasn't really a whole lot in the article, just saying that, you know, we do have resource officers in each school, and that one of the things they do work on is combating this area and coming up with plans with the parents and guardians.
Well, certainly, if we were going to go that direction, we would certainly talk to the board. It's interesting, you know, so you've got this kind of accountability for sexting, and then also recently we heard about the parent accountability for bullying. It's just seems to be an interesting trend in the, in the direction of accountability, moving more to the, to the, to the family level. But we don't currently, unless I'm wrong, and you, we don't currently have any plans to do that, but we'll certainly monitor this and, and...
Yeah, that's why, I thought it was something just for us to think about. It's, you know, it's a different approach for a different district. But anyway, that's, that's gonna be my update, and I'll just give you the article that was reported locally on that. Anybody else have any comments or anything?
The fines levied on the basis of a municipal ordinance? Okay, now, right, because it can't be a school district.
Right.
Yes, that must be it.
And I thought, what I got out of it was that we would work with the police department to handle this? Is that...
Well, yeah, I would imagine, I haven't experienced anything like this, but I suppose it would be similar to truancy. You know, we would probably identify, you know, in the course of some investigation, if we identified an event, we would engage with the SRO, and, and they would handle it as a citation.
Right, it's a violation of an ordinance, so we'd be required to turn it over to the law enforcement. It didn't work that way.
Right.
Okay, well, going on to the next agenda item, public and student comment. Is there anybody signed up for comment tonight at the PRL meeting? Okay. There is nobody signed up for public or student comment. That takes us to the next agenda item, which are proposed 2020 WASPA resolutions. You may recall that last month, we voted to move some forward to the regular meeting. We'll see those later tonight, and then some that we're gonna come back to tonight's meeting. And then Jeff and Jane and I worked a little bit on some of those. Jane, I think you wanted to pull some, I don't know if you just wanna expand on a little more?
Yeah, the, the one regarding the, the feeding the kids, I don't think that there's support to, for the taxpayers to pay it, even though they're paying for a whole second school system, could use that money to pay for this. But I think what I'm gonna do is, is work on it and bring it back, and try and address the language that is on the free and reduced meals, because right now, free and reduced meals, it's just the amount of income in the house. There are no exceptions to the rule. So if you have a rumor in your building, and their entire income is counted, not just the portion that they pay you for rent, or if you have a diabetic in the house, and their medicine costs $300 out of pocket every month, that's not considered into it. And I, I think that would be a more, a better place to start with it. So I think instead of discussing that one, we should just table it and focus on the other ones.
So Jane, since you attend that convention every year, you've been going a lot of years, do you know Dan Rossmiller?
Yes.
Because he just had, in the school news, the most recent one, he had an article on this, so I think that, maybe having a conversation with him to try and flush some of it out. I mean, I'm happy to do that, but I don't know that I'll capture your intended goal. But that would be somebody probably to speak with to kind of flush it out.
And he will be at the committee meeting that I go to at the end of next month, so I can talk to him there.
Okay.
Did you see the article in school?
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna bypass that one, then, then it's the disability coverage? All right. I guess the first question I have is, I'm still, I'm not really understanding how an individual isn't covered already, if they were to be injured on the job.
Because this is different than a disability you get through social security. It's a statute, you'd have to be named in the statute to be covered by it, and there are kind of two wings of this. There's the fully protective police correctional officers probation and parole, and then there are some like our highway crews that are covered, and they just get the disability portion. And I'm looking at the disability portion, because the full protective, they can retire at 55, and, you know, there are a few other things. But the disability part is, if you get injured, until you are put on the permanently disabled list, you are covered under 23036, which gives you 100% of your income tax-free while you recover. And then, once you've been deemed that you are permanently disabled, you cannot come back to your job in any form. Like, when I was injured, I was a correctional officer. If they had had light duty, or they could have put me to work in the school, I would have had to accept that job and take whatever pay, and it would have made up the difference if it was a lacerate. But the only way you get this coverage is if you're named in the statute. So what I'm asking is that teachers and staff be named in the statute.
I'll be, Jane, and I apologize, I just saw this today, so I didn't get a chance to ask you, but under the designations, on line number 22, I wonder if, if that description would include teachers, because it says a state employee who's not listed in this paragraph, who's ordered by his or her appointing authority to perform duties. Oops, why did this thing move on?
I, I, well, I don't think teachers would be considered as, they're public employees, but I don't think they're state employees. But this is through the retirement. I get paid through the same state retirement system that the teachers get paid.
The WRAS? Okay.
In lieu of a listed employee, so you're, you're performing duties that wouldn't be performed by somebody who's already listed. And I don't think that would be the case.
Well, I had said that I wanted to kind of dig into the statute a little bit by email when we were trying to flush this out, and some of, one of the concerns that arises is that the statute here, typically, there's three prongs that are associated, and it's that the individual is typically involved in active law enforcement, or some kind of fire, you know, protection from those types of things. I did see things like lifeguard, but the second prong is that they're frequently exposed to a high degree of risk. And then the third is that the job requires a fairly high degree of physical ability to complete the job. So that's one concern, is that we're kind of adding in a, maybe the individuals that we're trying to add don't meet all those prongs.
Well, that's, that's why when I originally brought it, I was just, I had singled out the special needs teachers and the aides that work with them, and then we decided as a board to include all the teachers. We could go back to those that just deal with the special needs, because I can, I'm almost positive, if you talk to the teachers that work with our special needs students, there'd be a lot of them that say they need those qualifications.
The other thing that happens, the other concern that arises, is that a number of those occupations that are currently listed under the statute have earlier retirement ages, and...
This would not qualify for that. This would just be the disability, disability part, like our highway workers? And that, when they add them to the list, that would be specifically drawn out, that it would be, the teachers would be, and staff would be included under this, but they do not qualify for the protective status, just the disability.
Is it possible, because I know one of the things that helps when you get to the Resolution Committee is flexibility. Is it possible to eliminate statute numbers and still accomplish what your ultimate goal is here? I did talk to Dan at WASPA a little bit, and he had said, you know, statute numbers change, and it just does, if there is some flexibility, that makes it more likely to move forward and to meet the intended goal, so...
That would just take out, if I can find it, yeah. Whoa, what's going on here? Would just take out the, the references to the 23036. I don't know, it'd be pretty short then, but...
To the benefits, you're just looking through the 23036, or 2M, talks about suffering, injury, you know, lists all the different type of employees, but it says that the employee shall continue to be fully paid by the employee, by the employee agency. So, I mean, if the teachers were to fall under this, would that mean that they would then continue to be paid by the school district?
I tell you the truth, I don't know. My check comes from the state.
Yours is under the disability...
Mine is under 4065.
4065.
And I, um...
Which would be different than the continuing...
Than the 23036, which is very temporary.
Right. That's the one, it looks like it comes, looks like it would say the district would have to continue to pay it.
Well, we could take that, definitely take that out. I mean, they would still be covered on a workman's comp in that, that area.
Right.
I'm just thinking, my concern is the long term, and it would be very rare that it would happen, because I've never heard of a teacher being so injured that they couldn't come back and work in a different classroom. But it would be for those very extremely rare cases where...
What happens now? We have teachers that go on long-term disability, don't we?
It's, it's much smaller monthly stipend, I think.
I wonder if, along those lines, I wonder, you know, Tammy or Carla, if you wanna speak a little bit to the, you know, so if somebody gets injured now, if a teacher gets injured now, what's the, what happens?
So, teacher gets, teacher or any support staff, particularly if they're working with students, but of course, any employee that's injured, they call into our nurse hotline, which is associated with our work comp company. They seek medical treatment, whatever they need to do. Say they're injured and they need to be off work. The first three days is considered a waiting period. It's a time to make sure that, you know, the work comp company is doing their part to see if they're gonna be approved for a work injury, they're doing the investigation. We, the employee can take their sick leave, their vacation, if they don't have any benefit time, it would be time without pay for that first three days during the waiting period. Then, once it's approved by work comp, work comp starts paying that employee on day four. If the employee is still off longer than seven days, work comp does go back to the very beginning, to day one, and pay them. So that has to be obviously a pretty severe injury if you're off work greater than seven days. So they work with work comp, trying to get them back to work. Beth, in relation to what you said, I don't know of any teachers or support staff that work directly with students that have been off on a really, a true long-term disability type situation, where under work comp, they get to a point where they would either prove that you're 100% disabled at this point, but work comp makes all those decisions on, on their end, and then they let the district...
Are they paid at their 100% rate for those, those days, 1 through 7, or 4 through 7?
Under work comp, there's a, there's a complicated formula, and it is a percentage of their wage, but it's calculated on six days of work, not five days of work, and it's without taxes, so it's, it's pretty close to what their salary is now. I just don't have the exact, because there's a lot of things they put into the formula.
So it's not much, much different, like, way lower?
No.
Okay. So that would, that would simplify it if we took the 23036 off and just went to the 4065. Because to reach the 4065, they would have to be injured by the actions of a student. And it would have to be, like I said, it would have to be a permanent disability, which is deemed by their doctor and a doctor that we would hire, and they would not be able to be in the capacity to come back. Like, if you work with special needs, you were injured there, but you could come and teach English in the regular classroom, you wouldn't qualify. And then it also puts limits on what they can earn once they're on 4065.
So do you think it needs more revision yet, then?
I think just, personally, I think just take out the 23036, but, I mean, the statute's been around forever.
I just feel like there might be other things that were missing, that if maybe you were collaborating with WASPA attorneys, you, they would catch those. Because I bet this has come up before, don't you think?
Well, yeah, no, no, it hasn't. And I think basically, because I'm in a unique position, that I've gone this route, I, most people don't even know it exists. And a lot of people that work these jobs really don't know it exists until it happens to them or someone they know.
So are you saying that if someone was injured and had a long-term disability, we don't have any coverage for long-term disability at this point?
That would be social security, I would guess. We don't have anything in the district.
The district has a long-term disability policy that covers all of our employees free of charge, and that covers you if you're determined to qualify under long-term disability. It depends on your age and when you get injured, but you can potentially have that until age 65, until you go on social security. So that's already there.
I feel like there was something in place already.
Okay. Mine is in place of social security.
That's outside of a workman's comp.
Sure, that's, that's just anybody in their own term, but it would also be applicable to someone if they were out on work comp and weren't able to come back, but we could also go down that route.
Thinking our employees might already be covered.
I don't think it's as good, but if that's what the board wants, that's fine, I just wanted to...
Well, we still may have to decide whether it's, if it's like not. We don't know what the dollar, not the difference is between the two options, but what's already existing and what exists under 4065. But there would, I think we need to figure that out, just to know if it's necessary for our district, but of course, it could be other districts. Are there other districts who don't have long-term disability, or is that pretty typical?
It's pretty standard.
Standard, so, okay.
I don't think that while they are submitting WASPA resolutions, it's district-specific. I mean, I think that it ends up being consideration by the, all the participants, so, you know, some things could be helpful to other districts that maybe aren't as helpful to us. One of the things I wonder, Jane, is you're kind of going back and forth on, you know, do we include all teachers and staff, and then now you're kind of pulling back and saying just special education teachers. Maybe, I don't know that we have time this year, but if we keep doing the WASPA resolutions and just keep it on the agenda through the year, and have more time to process for next year, maybe there's something there, because that seems to be more of a, at the, at the end, oh, you know, somebody suffered this injury from a student, and maybe, maybe we can try to capture that earlier, before, before we have individuals that are sustaining injuries. I'm thinking there might be something in there that we could try to work on for next year as well.
May also be helpful to know whether it's happened, you know? If we, if there aren't any examples of any teachers ever being injured this severely by a student, that they would even apply, qualify for this anyway, yeah, I don't really see it gaining much traction.
It was, it was just a thought to have in place, in case something does happen, because we do have students. I mean, we have some pretty big students, and, and the midst of a meltdown, they could really do some harm to somebody, but...
But the bottom line is, we do have coverage. You know, you have a short-term coverage that leads into long-term, plus you have workman's compensation. I mean, so we are covered, and you can continue, they can continue that long-term insurance afterwards, too. That goes with them, if they want to continue, and the, the district discontinues when they retire or move on. So that's something that we already have, that continues to move on, right?
I just, I guess what I'd like to determine over the next year, in case we bring this back, is which is better? Which is better coverage? And I'm not worried about the statute numbers changing. The statute has been around for eons, because I've been on it since 1990. So it's been around for a long time, and I don't see it going anywhere, because it covers such, I mean, it covers our police, our school troopers, probation and parole. I don't see it going away. But if the board decides that's what they want to do and wait until next year, that's fine.
I think that the intent behind it is, is very good. I'm just concerned that we, I just, I don't know that, maybe it still needs to be fleshed out a little bit, and my point in, in eliminating the statute numbers was just to give you some flexibility, so that if we did pass it and you could then take it to that Resolution Committee, there's a little bit more flexibility to work with it.
Well, and that's, that's the job of the Resolution Committee, too, is because Dan is there, and there are other people there, and they help work out the fine points of statutes. If you look at some of the statutes that have been submitted from other districts, it's, it's very extreme, from, some are very short and to the point, and there isn't a lot of background to some that are like novellas. I just thought it was something that would be a good conversation to have.
Well, does, is it something that, want to work on it a little bit more? I think we have one, do we have one more regular meeting before the 15?
Yes.
Because we could...
And I can take it at the end of the month when we have, I mean, at the end of September when I go to that committee meeting. I can take any other resolutions that we come up with at that time.
Oh, so you're saying if we have, if we bring it to PRL next month, but, and then our regular meeting in September, you can take it after that?
Mm-hmm. And, and you can introduce resolutions at the delegate hearing in January. There are parameters you have to meet, and you have to bring so many copies, and, but, yeah. If it's something new and unusual, you can present it at the delegate hearing in January. So there are a lot, there's lots of openings.
So are there any board members that go rogue and bring something on their own for that? Okay. I'm not sure what those parameters are. Just want to make sure that the board approved, we can do that. Okay, so I'm sort of sensing maybe a desire to kind of work on it a little bit, or maybe get some more information? Is that, is that a correct sense that I'm getting here? Does anybody have any strong feelings one way or another?
If we're having difficulty with it, it would have a hard time getting traction in other roles. I think we do need to clarify it.
Yeah, I do, too. Okay, so Jane, are you comfortable bringing it back to PRL next month?
Okay.
Okay. That's okay with everybody? I don't know if we need to vote on that, or if we do?
No, just...
Okay. All right. And then your next one, Jane?
Just, I was only interested in bringing forward the full-time substitute teachers, where the district would do the actual hiring and have that pool. I've talked to John from the union, and he said he's been, they've been asking this, for this for years. And it just seems, when we bring these resolutions forward, we're not asking for these laws to be written or whatever, it's just so that if somebody would present this law for consideration down in Madison, WASPA knows what to do. And I, I think opening the door for them for this kind of idea works, because our, our substitute pool is drying up. We have this company that's gonna do this for us now, but I've heard from people that they say they aren't interested in working through that company. So I don't know. It'll be interesting how this happens this year, but for other districts that aren't going that route, I just think this is something that would be good for WASPA to...
If you mind, Jane, I, I like the direction you're, you're thinking. So as I read this, what I, what I, it sounds like what you're asking is, would WASPA support the creation of basically a categorical aid that would support strictly the hiring of full-time substitutes?
And I think there would be some people that would love that job.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to write lesson plans normally, unless you have a long-term terms job.
Right, yeah.
And flexibility, I...
One thing it does is it lets the district kind of see an employee and how they operate before they offer them a full-time position.
Yeah.
So if you work as a full-time substitute for a school area, you're fantastic, then probably if you apply for a different position, I mean, you get a feel for the district, for one thing, but the district would also get an introduction to that person, so, in that way.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's one strategy we've talked about, but we're gonna see how this works with parallel education, but that's, there's a lot of potential benefits to it.
Thing that I worry about is, one nice thing about categorical aid is, it's pretty flexible in what you use it for, and if you create a category where this can only be used for a substitute teacher, then you're tying a district's hand. Maybe that's not their need, maybe their need is something else, like our district, for instance, we may say, parallel's working great for us, so we can't really use this, or it's not the way we would choose to use categorical aid. Seems like the money has so many strings attached to it, that I'd hate to create another category where it can only be used for this.
Well, we wouldn't have to, it wouldn't have to be that, that defined. It's just a matter of getting this in the resolution book, so that if something like this comes up, they have an idea of what to do with it. Because sometimes when this stuff comes up, there isn't time for a resolution, because that, you know, it takes a whole year to get there, and we need to know when it comes up, what is the path of buying...
Is there something that's keeping us from hiring a full-time substitute?
I mean, we're always looking for places where we can economize and, and decide where we need full-time staff, and where we can get by with a split position or whatever. I just, this is, I think, eventually gonna happen, because we don't have people that can afford to be substitute teachers, and not know if they're gonna be working in the weeks to come. And I just think to get in front of this makes sense. And I don't think it actually says categorical aid, it just says with new money.
Right, but that would be a categorical. I mean, this is by definition, it would be categorical. And it, it would come out of the total amount of money going to public education, though. So somewhere else, there would be something...
It's not gonna be new money.
Well, it would, yeah, be new, new money within the same pool, would not be employed...
Well, that's why it says with new money, because if it's being offered and there's not new money, then they know they don't support. You don't get what you don't ask for.
And they, if it goes to that Resolution Committee, they might also reward that, and have other ideas that, I think what they're most concerned about is... I think what they're most concerned about is what does the intent behind it? And that's kind of where some of that drafting comes in and redrafting is to try and get to that intent or that rationale the best means possible.
Well, we know that consistency is the main thing that helps our students. And that's the main force behind this is if we have this pool of teachers that we use as substitutes, they're our teachers and they teach our kids and we know what to expect, the kids know what to expect, rather than hoping somebody answers their own. Because I think sometimes it gets pretty.
This is one that I would love to have brought back next year after we see what a year of using parallel education, how that works.
But this, that's our district, I'm thinking state.
Right, and that doesn't really make any difference because let's say it is entirely new money coming in. Well, that's always good just by itself.
Sure.
But on top of that, we could have our own permanent subs in addition to what we're doing with the outside company.
And, you know, like I had said earlier, we don't need to worry just about our district. We don't know what's going to happen. And as Jane pointed out, WASB is a lobbying body. So if something were to come up in the next year where this could be helpful, I'd hate to say, oh, well, we waited, we wanted to wait and see. Probably not the ideal approach. I mean, I think the benefits are so many. Keith had talked about that earlier, kind of debating what, how to approach the substitutes. But definitely having substitutes in the schools that are familiar with that school, with that staff, with those students does give that consistency. So I like this. I'm, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, how much precision we need to have to submit something.
So Jane, do you have, you're going to be at the meeting in January, you know.
I'm not a delegate.
You're a delegate for us, correct?
No, I'm the delegate. I am on the committee that takes all the resolutions and combines the ones that are similar, eliminates ones that the rest of those people on the committee are not interested in. We fine tune what's coming to the delegate assembly in Madison.
I just, I just don't think there's any reason for us to keep on talking about it because it's a good idea. To move it forward and it's not going to affect us, just move it forward. I think it's a great idea because of the fact that all the things that you have set, you know, plus the fact we have a company already in place and we're going to sit back and take a look at that. I think it's a great thing for the state and we've been, I think a lot of districts have been talking about it long enough. I don't believe there's going to be any new money. I think it's going to be up to the individual districts to make a decision. If it's important enough for them to do that, they're going to do that. But I think there's nothing wrong for us to push it forward.
And I disagree, I think there's going to be new money. I think twenty twenty is going to be a new year and I think there's going to be more money for education.
Not only that, but you will, your committee will edit this and refine it. So if we put it in this form, it may not end up that way, but it still may end up as a resolution.
The general idea will be there and, like I said, Dan Rasmella will be there and.
I think we should go ahead with it.
I would like to eliminate that last paragraph from the rationale though. I think it's unnecessary. I think that rationale is pretty much covered really just from the benefit of the continuity. I mean, isn't that?
That's fine. I guess I just would like the idea to go forward.
Yeah, I agree with you in that. I also agree that we don't have to have this nailed down to the precision that maybe would be in its final form, but we, it is our name behind it.
Exactly.
So we do want to make it look the way that we all think looks good because we're signing off on it.
And that's how resolutions should be. It should be, everybody puts their stamp on it.
So I'd like to eliminate that last paragraph and just, there's just a couple of kind of typo. Because this changed from the last one that we were looking at, you know, that we were talking about that. So I don't know if, if everybody's comfortable moving it forward. I'd like to just kind of, there's like a semi-colon missing.
Yeah, so those kinds of grammatical things can just change before the next meeting, it's fine.
Okay.
With your magic.
So should we, let's vote on this one then to move it forward to the regular meeting? All right, so I'm seeking a motion to submit to WASB the full-time substitute teachers in Wisconsin Public Schools Resolution.
I'm moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Jane. So the last one, you had that for, you don't want to go through that one, right? Okay. Okay, so that will go to the next regular meeting. And now we are at policy fifty-six-ten, High School Activities Code.
So Mr. Weber is here and I also see Mr. Miller is there in support if you need him. So go ahead, Paul.
So normally this is probably what I gave a little earlier, but in the transition it didn't end up coming to the July meeting, so we're bringing it to the August meeting. So there was a number of changes that were asked to be baked to the activities code, some being mandated by the WIAA, others as an adjustment to try to improve what we have. And so on some of these, I got the background from Brian. Obviously, I wasn't involved in a lot of the discussion on some of these. So that's why I brought Brian here tonight so that if you had any questions that, you know, I couldn't answer that, you know, that he could follow up and give you the information that you need.
I do have a question on page four. Regarding number six, any student charged becoming ineligible?
For my highlight is.
Not surprised, Lance. So my concern there is are students being charged and then being penalized and if they actually are not guilty of the alleged offense, that's problematic.
So, Mr. Miller, I'm going to, maybe you address that.
Thanks, that addition is direct wording from the WIAA. And a little bit of a background to it was, made some of you aware of it. I think it was two years ago, there was a young man who played in the state championship basketball game with an ankle monitor. It was a fairly serious charge. Anyway, that's what the whole state membership adopted and they've asked that we all put at least the minimum into our code of conduct. And if schools or districts wish to make something even more stringent, they can do so. But that wording is what the WIAA adopted.
Was that a recent request? Because I looked around today at some online activities codes of other districts and didn't see that language, but maybe that just hasn't changed yet. Is it a recent request?
I don't know what all the other districts have done.
But that was fairly recent. I think that came through in the April WIAA meeting.
Because number six, number six allows us to penalize a student in some way for violating a law. It doesn't even require a conviction. We don't have to wait for a conviction, it just says a violation. So in some ways, it doesn't even require charges. So in some ways, six could be stronger than the extra provision that's added. What concerns me, probably what concerned you as well, is that provision that's added just takes, it takes all flexibility away and just says automatically if there's a charge. And I would rather us have the flexibility to decide based on what evidence we know of.
What happens if we don't adopt the exact language? Are we on the WIAA?
No. We probably wait another year then and see what other schools are adopting, to be honest with you. This passed at the April annual meeting. And the simplest thing was to take the wording that the membership passed.
If you may, so Mr. Miller, I wonder, so if, if we did not adopt this and a student was charged with a felony and it was not an athletic code violation, then we wouldn't be in a position where we'd be forced to forfeit any competitions, anything like that? You know, so for instance.
Yeah, I know what you're asking. I don't know, I'd have to check on that, Keith, to make sure.
Because if they're academic, ineligible, and then we let them play, we have to forfeit.
So in other words, if we took this out and we had a convicted felon playing.
Yep, or charged.
Would we potentially have to forfeit events?
Right.
Well, the question then is whether or not this makes someone ineligible in any WIAA event.
Right.
And if that's the case, it may be worth referencing that in the activities code that by the way, if you are charged with a felony, you are not permitted to take part in any WIAA sanctioned event. But this policy, this, or this code applies to more than just WIAA events. So I mean, if this is something that WIAA adopted that, so this is under their eligibility rules, then it doesn't really matter whether we have it in ours or not. Our students can't take part in WIAA events if they've been charged with a felony, whether we have this in here or not.
Right, we certainly want to notify them.
We need to reference that in here, that for WIAA events, this takes place, but it may not for other.
So for the student, the opportunity to be heard prior to any penalty being enforced, who is the deciding body for that?
Or the hearing?
Yes.
There's an, there's an activities council that's made up of both the high school principals, activities directors and teaching staff.
Okay. So if we have a student who is charged and they contested, they're saying they're innocent, they want to keep playing, then at that point, they would have that hearing while it's pending?
I believe this exception, the exception is that for anything other than a felony charge, they can, they have the right to be heard. So any other kind of violation in here, but this one, if they're charged with a felony, that's, this goes into effect.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to suggest that we tie our hands so that we have to wait until there's a conviction, but I also don't like tying our hands and saying if there's a charge, it's automatically, like we don't have any choice. That's the part I don't like.
It's like under-inclusive and over-inclusive at the same time. Yeah, I have similar discomfort on this.
Well, with the charge, the harness to reputation, the reputation of the district, but that's all. And we're punishing somebody who hasn't been found guilty. So we've got to kind of weigh those two things against each other.
Jeff, you're exactly right. And that's exactly what has happened with districts that didn't have something like this in place because of the fact that they did allow a student. And that is statewide, people know about it, you know, and that's a problem. And you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't because of the fact that now the coaches have to make decisions and the athletic directors have to make decisions and the principals have to make decisions with the council. So by not doing something, we are basically hamstringing our coaches and our principals as well.
But under the current code, the, a student who's been charged but not convicted can be suspended from play. I mean, we suspend, we suspend students from, we expel students from school without a conviction before the criminal process is taken, just based on the evidence that we know.
Can I ask a question on that? Lance, do you, where do you, do you see that, that situation where we could call it a violation when they were just charged somewhere in the language that exists?
Well, it doesn't say that there has to be a conviction of a law, it says just violating the law.
Okay.
It doesn't say a conviction for vandalism.
Right.
Right, we expelled protect, right? And so if, if there's a charge and we felt the charge was indicative of a threat to the personnel property and well-being of our students, well, then we could certainly refuse a student's participation.
I mean, I would rather strengthen our current language to make it clear that we don't need a conviction than to, than to put in language that says that if there's a charge, we automatically have to do, we automatically have to suspend. I would rather, if we're worried that our current language isn't strong enough, I'd rather, you know, just strengthen that current language and point out that we don't need a conviction.
Would you also be comfortable referencing the WIAA?
If, if the WIAA is saying that students that are charged with a felony cannot compete, then I think that we should reference that. I think, I think we need to find out if that's true or if they're just, if they're just asking us to put it in ours or if they're saying for their own eligibility rules.
Yeah, I think that's good. The other question that I have is that, so the student would become ineligible for all further participation until the student has paid his or her debt to society and the court's considered a sentence served. Is it something that we could also include or would also want to include? Some, somebody within the district also made a determination? Or is that problematic?
I'm sorry, I'm not following you.
So the student paid his fine or her fine. So the court said, okay, it's, you paid your fine.
Yep.
Then is, then are we saying, okay, you're automatically back able to play again? Or is it something that somebody within the district still would have a final say?
So I'm looking to Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that.
So they owe a hundred dollar fine, they pay their fine. Are they automatically back in or do, because you've got a twenty-five percent clause, right? If it's a violation?
Yeah, and I, this conversation was going on in the membership for a year and at the annual meeting and all of the things that you guys talked about. They've been talking about for all of the possible things that could or couldn't happen. And I think the wording settled this way, I could be wrong, but they wanted the word charge in there because the conviction took over a long period of time and in some way, sometimes there's a plea or whatever. And so the student never serves anything for probably being involved in behavior they shouldn't have. So they, that's why they stuck with the word, I think they really stuck with the word charge was if you're charged, you're done playing for now. And as soon as whatever is determined, whether that process in the legal system takes months or whatever, when it's completed, you become eligible. There wasn't conversation about it going before a council again or meeting other criteria in the code books. I didn't hear that conversation come up. It could certainly, certainly go in front of the activities council again just to verify that the student didn't have complete whatever penalties that they were supposed to complete, I suppose.
Well, I guess my concern on that is maybe within the district, it is perceived as a bigger issue than maybe the court might have perceived it. And maybe it's not as much of a punishment, if you will, whatever they do receive and then all of a sudden they're back out to playing. So I guess that's, that's why I had that concern is if the school district at some, in some capacity makes that decision, okay, you're okay to play again.
My concern is what about the person that gets charged? And then it's found that they got the wrong person? Whatever was thought to have happened actually didn't happen? So now you've got a kid that didn't do anything and he was, he was not allowed to play and now he's going to lose his college scholarship.
No, I mean, I really hate that too, I do, because there is that risk. But the flip side is the criminal proceedings take such a long time. And if somebody is ultimately guilty, that's a long time of them not having.
Which is why I don't think we should tie ourselves to either one. We shouldn't require, we shouldn't require ourselves to suspend the student based on a charge, but we also shouldn't prevent ourselves from suspending a student just based on a charge. We can suspend a student even without a charge.
Sure, there's no right.
Right, if we have our own internal investigation with our own internal information and student witnesses or whatever it might be, we don't even have to wait for a charge.
Right.
But going back to what you said, I agree with him. But let's not make it too nebulous either because of the fact, if it's vague and now people are having to come up with a certain amount of time that after he has paid or she has paid back to society, what does that mean? If a student made a bad choice their freshman year, are you going to continue to? If a student made a bad choice their freshman year, are you going to continue to punish them until they're seniors? Or are you going to put some time on that, say in a year or something like that? I don't want to see this be something that's vague and letting Mr. Miller make the decision on that. He doesn't want to be in that position.
One of the questions I have is, we're talking about felonies. We're not talking about misdemeanors. We're not talking about a hundred dollar fine here. We're talking about something that is a major, major, major activity against society that, that the district attorney or whomever has made a decision that they're going to, they're going to move ahead and file charges. So it seems to me that if it was a misdemeanor, it would be one thing, but if we're talking about felonies, we're talking about some pretty major issues.
But errors are still made. And you punish a kid for something they didn't do. That's where I think keeping hold of the right to make the decision or not, because the school district, the teachers, the staff that know this kid better than the court system does would be better able to make that decision versus whether they should continue to play or not.
So I'm just wondering if, to kind of move this along, so I, I, what I'm hearing is, let's reference WIAA. Let's, let's, let's say something about you can be suspended for being charged, right? Or any conduct on becoming something.
Yeah, I just think if we want to strengthen number six, we could point out that you don't necessarily need to be charged or convicted for us to take action.
Agreed.
And then for WIAA, I just think we need to find out, has WIAA adopted something that now automatically makes these students ineligible? Because if yes, we should point that out.
Right. And then as far as getting them back in, I was just looking at the suspensions down on page seven and beyond. And there's some timeframes and ways to get back in. I think we just follow those procedures instead of creating a one-off for a felony. I mean, frankly, if it's a felony and they get, and they get, they aren't coming back, so you know, that'd be a moot point. Are we comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. Good questions.
And then I have a question on page seven. The AODA counseling and assessment and stuff. I think we need to move tobacco out of there. Family doesn't need to be paying for an assessment over tobacco. Is it a nasty thing? Yes. But I don't think a counselor is going to do one way or the other when it comes to tobacco.
I don't have a strong feeling. I don't know. What's been your experiences with tobacco? Do we, if they have a tobacco violation, do we get?
Treat it as, as a violation. It's an illegal substance for me.
Thanks, Ford. I mean, you don't really want our.
Oh, I'm not saying they shouldn't get in trouble for it. I just don't think they need to be assessed for it. Let's just move it right down to number three.
Maybe it's just good for a deterrent though, if they know that.
Yeah, three says if violation is not an alcohol or drug related offense, so that's where tobacco would be sent.
I get what, I get your point, Jane. I think though that it's good for the deterrent effect. Students are aware that, hey, don't get caught smoking. You could have to pay for this. It's very expensive.
I don't think it's a deterrent though.
The one thing I think to point out is that tobacco will also now take into, into the vaping area. And my past history in the last few years of being a high school principal, we have a lot of kids who are becoming addicted to nicotine, probably more so than alcohol. And, and we have kids who cannot make it through the day, even one, a half a day without getting some type of nicotine fix. And so, I mean, I know it's in a different type of addiction, but it's still an addiction. And at least then the parents would be aware that this could be a major issue for this kid moving forward.
Sure. So what, what kind of thing do they do? I, I don't understand how they would even test or assess that. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. And yeah, I know that the vaping is very addictive.
That's pretty dangerous.
Dangerous, yes. Well, the pens themselves are dangerous and it's dangerous because they inhale it more fully into their lungs because it isn't nasty.
Yeah, I'm fine leaving it the way it's written here.
Me too.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up because I just thought it was an extra strength factor to me. That's fine.
The only thing I have to add on page seven here is you've got a bunch of grammatical problems you've got to correct now.
Where is that?
Oh, there's a bunch of, well, and if you want to go through all of them.
No, you can, you can email us.
There's comments that don't belong and.
We'll fix that.
It's not a final form, I take it.
Could you take, could you fix some of the et ceteras? Place it with other language. It's not strong, it's not very strong language to add, et cetera.
And I was just wondering under, on page four, number five, about the non-alcoholic beer, is, is that? Because I looked it up. The state statute says it's treated like soda. I mean, is there a reason for non-alcoholic, anything to be included in this?
I'm sorry, Jane, which page are you on now?
Uh, page four, five, right above the six that we were talking about.
I have the whole collection of alcoholic beer, wine, or lookalikes.
I suppose it's a look-alike.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't get that because it's, it's not against the law for them there, but they can go in the store and buy it. It just seems.
Before we're talking about is, is being a model and, and living out an athletic code. The look-alike, and if they're out hanging out with a bunch of other people and they're drinking a non-alcoholic substance, I think that we could leave it in.
I think I would rather have them drink the non-alcohol. I just, it just is weird to me. Just wanted to point it out.
Can I find maybe?
That's more.
I, I don't have any strong opinion on the non-alcoholic beer. I do think that it probably is likely saying it's more about the athletic code and what the message they're trying to send. The flip side is they're not drinking the beer. I can add too.
It's just a bad choice anyway.
What you end up doing is you open up another door for argument to not be suspended. It was a non-alcoholic beer.
Yes.
I had a non-alcoholic beer. You misread that.
For some reason that got in your, if somebody had problems on the.
What about number eight?
On page?
Provision eight, number, on page 11. This is quite wordy. Is this the direct language that was suggested?
Yeah.
Because I'm just wondering if there's a way to clean this up too, so it's a little bit clearer.
I'm sorry, Brian, you see this came from WIAA as well?
It gets to WIAA. Yeah, I understand. I think having the provision is good. You would never want a student to not report and stay on scene because they're worried about their own, what would be a relatively minor code violation. So I think the provision itself is good. It could be shorter and more direct, but.
You know, and I'm thinking back, you know, when, you know, Brian talks about they've been talking about these things for a year or more. I, I'm also assuming, you know, they've, you know, they've vetted it, you know, with their council. I guess I'd be just a little hesitant to change their language because, kind of similar like, you know, the Niola argument. If they've approved it and they've run it by their council.
Well, I guess here's, here's where my question is. So we have victims of sexual assault and bystanders who report a sexual assault, that's the first thing. Request emergency assistance, second. Cooperate with and assist law enforcement, third. And stay on the scene. Okay, that's four things. Or who encounter law enforcement at a medical facility at which the victim is being treated. So that or is, you either have to do the first four or is it one? I mean, it's, it really is not clear there. What, if we get to that second part.
If I was an attorney representing the student, it's not what I do, but who didn't do any of those first things, but the officer saw him at the hospital, I'd say well he qualified with, met your or.
Right, they just need to do that.
He encountered the law enforcement at the, at the medical facility.
They just need to do that part, right.
He didn't stay on scene, didn't report it, didn't do any of the good stuff that you should do, but met him at the hospital. And so I've qualified. You can't, can't suspend him. He gets to finish out the season.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I think it's unclear. I just feel like there's a way to write it that could be numbers one, two, three, four.
But then that's up to the WIAA to make their provision clearer to their members.
I think those four.
We can change that.
Those four things probably came out of a year-long conversation and they're examples of what happened. And that's a good example. A student didn't stay there, ended up at the medical facility, encountered law enforcement, maybe had been using substances, but was there because of the incident. So I'm thinking those four things came out of conversations of real examples that happened in the situation in different instances.
Seems like this section eight could have an A1, two, a B, and a C, just from the way that this is written. I, I, I mean, at a, at a minimum, that first sentence is problematic to me, but is it clear to everybody else?
They have to do all those things?
Well.
Because not everybody needs to call law enforcement. There's three people there.
Right.
And that's the thing too, yeah.
The next sentence reads, "The victim or bystander must meet the state amnesty law requirements." So that's, that's the operative phrasing in this and everything else comes with words. Just, it could be this, could be that, it could be the next thing. They got to be whatever the state, the state law requires.
And that's what should be listed here.
So you'll be bringing back revisions then, right? Based on?
Apparently.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe I'll just offer a suggestion on that section because I'm not, I must not be articulating.
It's the combination of the and and the or. That's the problem. Because the and makes it seem like you have to do those first five things, but the or makes it seem like,
That's all you have to do.
or you can get rid of those first five things as long as you see a cop at the hospital.
Right.
It's the combination of the two that makes it a little vague.
The last sentence is weird.
Yeah. Let us do a little word research and we'll make sure we're consistent with WIAA and, and bring it back. Is that okay?
Okay. Okay, so we're not going to have a motion on that one tonight then, right?
Right.
All right, so handbooks.
But just a note, so because sports have started, I'm assuming Paul and Brian, these, these items are in the handbook pending board approval as they're presented tonight? Am I right?
Yeah, we, we mentioned them at the sports meetings that we had with parents, but we also mentioned that they were not approved yet, but this is what was being handed.
So just so you know, if you hear, you know, jibber jabber about these, they're, you know, we're certainly, they aren't official. Official jibber jabber, sorry. Just so you know. But we'll, we'll make them official once you approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going on, I don't know that we need to spend a whole lot of time on this one. I know we want to get to the Niola policy, but we had had discussions in the past about having a new board member handbook and a candidate guide essentially. So I mentioned that to Cassie and she very kindly and ambitiously pulled together a lot of information that a new board member, if they had that access in one spot, would learn a ton about the district and then also the board candidate handbook. So the question just becomes, if there's anything that you think shouldn't belong or that you think is missing? I think it looks great, Cassie.
Mm-hmm.
And the question that might be pending is how is this going to be available? It's going to be available online, so we don't have massive amounts of paper being printed.
Do we all get senior gold cards?
Yes.
If you're of the age of 60 and live in the Wausau School District.
Take a big thank you on that one. I thought these looked very good, exactly what we were talking about for a candidate running for school board. It gives a good understanding of what the district is all about, plus the fact the follow-up. Now everything is in one place where we can go to. So it was well done. Nice job, Cassie.
Thanks, Cassie.
Anybody have anything they'd like to add to it or should we go ahead and have that put on the website, the information? Yes?
Okay, looks good.
Yes.
I feel so.
All right, I don't think we have to have an official vote for that. It's just a handbook. Okay, so then now we're getting to the Niola policies.
Yeah. So just, I'm just looking at time and I see some people here for the next meeting as well. I wonder, first of all, I had, have a proposal for, for keeping these policies moving, but doing it in a manageable way. I wonder if the board would approve of, of covering as many policy drafts as we can at a PR, at each PRL and committee meeting within a one-hour timeframe. I think a one-hour timeframe is, is digestible, you know, the, the policies will get the due, you know, the, you know, the scrutiny there due, and we can still keep meetings moving. So anybody has an opposition to that, let's, we would just plan, so today obviously we're at PRL, two weeks, so every two weeks essentially, two to three weeks, we would be spending about an hour doing policy review, trying to get these in place by, I think, is it November, in October?
In November.
On November, right, so.
So would this, since Saturday six, would this be bumped to two weeks?
Um, we could do whatever the board pleases, right?
I hate to have people waiting and.
For an hour of this.
Yeah.
Is it urgent? I mean.
We don't necessarily have to spend an hour.
Right.
And we don't have to have an hour. Now these, one thing you'll notice, you know, we went through the, the bylaws. You'll notice a lot of repetition in language, right? So some, it'll become more and more familiar. I don't know if the board, maybe you've had enough chance to review this and we could just cover, take maybe 10, 15 minutes and cover questions? Or do you want to table this?
I'd like to table it. I, I'm wondering if instead of trying to fit it in here, that we could make provision that when it runs, this PRL meeting runs late with other things, that we could have it at the end of our regular meeting? I just think if we keep tabling it, we're never going to get to it. Would you run something at the end of the regular meeting? By that time, I'm not thinking.
And that's the thing. We don't want to be, have our brains, you know, expiring, want to be in our best form. I wonder if it, would it also be possible maybe to do a, a special meeting and just focus on Niola policies maybe once or twice?
I think that's a great idea.
And because I think then maybe we can just be focused on that.
With pizza.
Noted.
Yes.
Lots of pizza.
I think that sounds like a good idea because one hour of just hitting this, I think you'd make progress.
Yeah, I agree.
You get in a room and think.
So perhaps we could table it tonight?
Yep.
If that's.
Yeah, I'm just, just when you bring it back, the only question I had on all the policies was the 1400, one of where positions have superintendent schools and it lists all the, basically it lists the LAT team, but only lists about half of them and they have different names than what we use.
Right.
So that was the only, so maybe when, when that one comes back, you know.
Okay.
So it says, it, it just, it lists, you know, the assistant superintendent of business, so that would be sort of a new name. And it, and it doesn't list all of them, so that might just be something to look at.
What page are you on, Lance?
It's 55 of the board book.
You said 1400 version one?
Version two.
Version two, we were going to.
We got to skip, you got to skip through all of the red stuff and get to the stuff that's green.
Oh, and you know what that green is, frankly? That is my job description. We were going to replace the, their 1400 version two, that, that was district administrator job description with our own. So that's what's currently existing. You know, that needs some work.
Yeah, it says, it lists who you supervise, but it only lists about four from your, four or five from your LAT team.
Yeah.
And the names are different.
Yeah. What's the date on that thing? Yeah. It, it could use some attention. And I didn't, I didn't make the time to rewrite it before we, we just kind of uploaded what existed. Yeah, but agreed.
If that's what is happening, because this is green too.
If that's what is happening, because this is green to on page 49, the incapacity of the district administrator. It says in the first line, "The board to appoint the assistant superintendent chief finance and business services officer." I think that's something we should address every year because we don't want to lay it on one person's job description because while I think the person we have now would do a great job, we don't know what's coming down the pipe.
Sure. Just a note, usually the reason that the business officer is in this position, obviously they know the budget, but they are also closely tied to any legal, you know, procedures that might be going on, including HR things. So that's the reason that that specific title was put in.
I can definitely see the reason why you'd want somebody that's the go-to person because in an emergency situation, you want somebody there. But I think it's something that could be decided on a yearly basis and there should be a stipend that was good.
Well, only if I'm incapacitated.
I know. I think waiting in the wings, I think somebody should have a little something for waiting in the wings too because wait for that shoe to drop, you never know.
Well, if that's part of the job description for that job, then that's fine.
But it's not currently in that job.
Kind of is.
Okay, are there any other specific things to identify for Keith so that when we do see this for real, he'll have other answers? Doesn't sound like it.
On top of four, we might decide that we want to add relationship with staff and relationship with community in evaluations. But that's something to be discussed at that time. There's things that we have under the job description, such as those that are not part of the evaluation. But if we included everything, the evaluation would be like our old one.
And just so you know, anything in green is something that we took from, I believe, from current policy and put in here. So that's part of our current policy on evaluation, but...
And partly the term "board employee" shows up here and there. And other places it just says employees. And so we might want to strike "board employee" because that... I don't even know who that would be. It's not everybody. Or just Keith, because it doesn't read that way in the language though, but it is just Keith.
Okay, any other comments on this? We will see that later. And I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, PRL is...